Ready, Mr. President?
Okay, roll call.
Gurnat?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Jerem?
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here. Please stand for the pleasure and invocation by Councilmember Amy Milton.
..........................................
I'd like to say, first of all, I hope that Councilman Thompson had a wonderful birthday last week. I'd also like to extend a very happy birthday to my niece, Alath Thibodeau, who turned six today. And I told her I'd be wishing her a happy birthday today. But more importantly, I would like to congratulate both the Huskers and the Blue Jays. This is very exciting for not only our city but our entire state. I attended the University of Nebraska and I also attended Creighton, so this may be very difficult. I used to say that I was a Husker during football season and a Blue Jay during basketball season. This year, that's all changed. So, I do want to, I'm very proud of both the coaches. And I want to commend both of them for both the humility in which they win and the grace in which they show when they lose. And I think that speaks not only to their character, but it defines our community as a whole. And I'm really glad that the rest of the nation gets to see some of that. So, with that, I would just like to say, "Go Huskers and go Jays." And I know productivity on Friday might be down a little bit throughout our entire state, but that's a good thing and I'm hoping to see both of them play each other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's true. Of all people, I should have probably...
City Clerk certifies publication on daily record on March 14th in North River District Council and regular City Council meeting March 18th, 2014. A current copy of Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The Council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
We're fixing chairs here. Zoning ordinance on final ring plan board attachments. Item number five, ordinance to rezone property located at 4409 Dodge Street from GI, General Industrial District to CC, Community Commercial District. A, Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number five is today. Do we have proponents? Mr. Harding.
Brinker Harding with Colliers International, 6464 Center Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? See none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, I make...
There we go. I would make a motion to approve and also commend the public works and planning for working with the applicant here to improve their location at 44th and Dodge. And I'm sure there are a lot of King Kong fans that'll be excited to have a nicer place to go in and eat. We would all agree the building's a little worn out and it would be a nice addition to that portion of Dodge.
Second. They're giving Louis M. some heartburn over there, huh? There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Gurnat? Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number six, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for the Thompson Mile West to allow automotive sales and automobile repair service located northeast 177th Street and West Maple Road. A, Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number six is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing's closed.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number seven, ordinance to amend section 55, 651 through 55, 663 to adopt new and more detailed digital flood hazard maps for the Elkhorn River in addition to updating the flood fringe and floodway overlay district regulations. A, Planning Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number seven is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing's closed.
Move to approve.
Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Eight, nine are adopted, seven to zero. Liquor, we'll take items 10 to 11 and 12. It's one applicant for three licenses. Item number 10 is Goldenrod Brewing Company, 3562 Farnham Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location. 11 is the same applicant for a Class L Brew Pub license, new application, new location. And 12 is a catering license, the same applicant, new application, new location.
Public hearing on items 10, 11, and 12 are today. Are there any proponents? Please come down. What's your name and address?
Tony Thomas. And the address of the facility is 3558, 3560 and 3562 Farnham.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? See none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Eight, nine are adopted, seven to zero. Liquor, we'll take items 10 to 11 and 12. It's one applicant for three licenses. Item number 10 is Goldenrod Brewing Company, 3562 Farnham Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location. 11 is the same applicant for a Class L Brew Pub license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on items 10, 11, and 12 are today. Are there any proponents? Please come down. What's your name and address?
Tony Thomas. And the address of the facility is 3558, 3560 and 3562 Farnham.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? See none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Tony. Now's your chance to tell everybody what you're doing, a free advertisement.
Okay. We're doing a brew pub, which is a restaurant that produces its own beer and seeking the catering license also to do offsite events and be able to sell beer in Growlers offsite.
So, why will you be the place to go now instead of maybe up to Benson?
Yeah, or an extension of the Midtown Crossing area. There's going to be a lot of redevelopment going through the area and we want to be the ones to be the catapult that give another option for people to come eat some freshly made food and freshly made beer.
Great. Well, we want to wish you luck on your endeavor here and hopefully we'll get out the, to try that out. So, motion approved.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. And of course, I have to weigh in now because you mentioned Benson. And I have some Benson people here today. They're actually next on the agenda. So, we'll welcome your place. I'm sure it's going to be great, but we'll also welcome the addition of additional opportunities in Benson too and that the healthy competition will be good for everybody. Thanks. Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 13, the Beercade, 6102 Maple Street, request permission for addition of the present Class C liquor license location of the first floor and basement area of approximately 26 by 130 of the two-story building to the west known as 6104 Maple Street.
Public hearing on number 13 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Larkin?
Hello, I'm John Larkin, address 6102 Maple Street. I am one of the co-owners of Beercade. We're bought, let's say, almost a year ago to the day, our 100-year-old building and are just finishing up renovations now to move the Beercade next door.
Yes.
Which looks great.
Thompson?
Yes.
And you want a second to give a commercial about your new place, too?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero.
We will be converting Yogg Beercade into a pub called St. Andrews Pub.
Item number 14, Dudley's Pizza and Tavern, 2110 South 67th Street, Suite 108, request
It'll be a neighborhood kind of sportsy joint gearing towards soccer and the golf fan,
permission for an addition to the present Class C liquor license for the outdoor patio
which I believe are very underserved.
Just in time for the World Cup.
area 44 by 13 to the southeast.
That's right.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Public hearing on number 14 is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific, appearing here with Robbie Malm from Dudley's
Public hearing's closed.
Move to approve.
Roll call.
Gurnat?
Pizza.
Yes.
And this is just an outdoor beer garden that they're attaching to the place.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
It's a new place that's very, very nice and I'm not sure whose district it's in, but
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
it's also a good place to go.
Yes.
And go Jays.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Yes. Any other proponents today?
Adopted, seven to zero. Item number 14, Dudley's Pizza and Tavern, 2110 South 67th Street, Suite 108, request
See none any opponents. Public hearing's closed.
Move to approve.
Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
permission for an addition to the present Class C liquor license for the outdoor patio Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? area 44 by 13 to the southeast.
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Public hearing on number 14 is today.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Are there any proponents?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific, appearing here with Robbie Malm from Dudley's
And Jerem passed a second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's adopted, 601 passing. Consent agenda, any member of City Council, because I placed on the consent agenda, to
Pizza. And this is just an outdoor beer garden that they're attaching to the place.
be removed. Items removed, consent agenda shall be taken at by City Council meeting following the
It's a new place that's very, very nice and I'm not sure whose district it's in, but
consent agenda in the order in which they were removed as otherwise provided by the
it's also a good place to go. And go Jays.
Thank you.
City Council Rules of Order.
Any other proponents today? Public hearings on agenda items number 15 through 18 were held on March 11th. See none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Gurnat? Move to approve.
Yes.
Gray?
Roll call.
Yes.
Gurnat? Jerem?
Yes.
Yes.
Gray? Milton?
Yes.
Yes.
Jerem? Pauls?
Yes.
Yes.
Milton? Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
15 through 18 are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items number 19 through 30 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See none, public hearings are closed.
Motion.
Roll call.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
19 through 30 are adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda item 31 shall be held on third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item 32, ordinance to amend the Oklahoma State Code, section 34-142, 44, 52, 55, 163, 164, and 165 regarding the lease of city property to modify provisions regarding the private parking leases to calculate the rental amounts, allowing successors to lease and other regulations.
Public hearing on number 32 is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. I do want, I'll close public hearing, then I do want to ask public works the question. I don't know if it's Mr. Fitzher, is he? I see him back. Thanks.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works.
Thanks, Todd. So, can you just review a little bit about what this does? So, we've had some conversations about this with some different residents, in particular in Dundee and other places across the city, that do a fair amount of leasing of residential parking and originally brought to our attention some concerns about an outdated ordinance that this updates and makes some good changes, I think, in terms of what's required of those people who do that. So, if you wouldn't mind just kind of walking through that a little bit and talk about what that does.
In short, the changes are not that drastic. One of the changes that we took out was the requirement to outline the parking stall with either yellow tape or yellow paint. That was not being adhered to. There were concerns from residents about the way that looked and not knowing what kind of material to use. That's been removed. The other thing that was changed is the requirement to have public works participate in the installation of the sign. We've had instances in the past where vehicles were towed. We got called from the owners of those vehicles that stated that there was no sign or if there was, we didn't see it or we couldn't find it. We've actually talked with OPD about that. You know, if the sign is not within reasonable proximity where the driver of that vehicle would see the sign and they park there and then they get towed, if they can prove that there was no visible sign, then oftentimes that towing charge has to be reimbursed and it creates all kinds of issues for enforcement. So, the requirement to have public works put in the sign, we would simply charge for the installation. There's no profit or anything like that built into that fee. It's just simply for the cost of the sign, the post, the cable checks, and the installation. And that's a one-time-only fee, the first time the sign's put up. On an annual basis, then, when the lease is paid, there's basically a barcode type of a decal that would be issued to the leasing and they would place that decal similar to what we put on our license plate every year that would indicate to law enforcement and others that that was a current lease for that sign. So, that's in the ordinance as well.
Okay. And there's no fee increases involved in this? I think a typical person is usually paying about 100 bucks a year for something like this, right?
That's correct.
And it's still complaint-based? This isn't going to start, you know, this doesn't encourage enforcement sweeps or anything? It's just a complaint-based thing?
It is complaint-based. We have, there are no plans for increased efforts for enforcement or anything. I believe there, this kind of got started because of that, because occasionally we do have parking that, over the years, maybe creeps into neighborhoods and causes folks issues. And then, when they do call for enforcement, oftentimes the result of that enforcement is ticketing and the disclosure that maybe some of the leases aren't up to date and things like that. But we have no plans or efforts or staff that's going to go out and do any new enforcement as a result of this, no.
And I think removing the kind of the outdated paint requirement's good and also helpful from an appearance standpoint. We talked also about the small signs that get installed. And I think public works feels pretty strongly those small signs need to get installed in each spot, even though we've expressed some concern about the visualness of that, right?
Yeah, I guess the comment there is clutter and we've heard that from Omaha By Design and some other groups. Unfortunately, we've learned the hard way that you need to be very distinct with your signage on where the leased stalls are because if somebody sees a sign at the end of the block that indicates, you know, this block has primarily leased stalls, if there's 15 available stalls and 10 of them are leased stalls, the average consumer, the average citizen doesn't know which stalls are leased and which ones are not without an individual sign, which makes enforcement virtually impossible and then the whole system breaks down. So, we do feel strongly that there needs to be signage indicating where those leased stalls are and then that signage needs to be periodically updated or annually updated so that we know which leases are current.
So, really, the only change, if this is adopted next week, is that the city would now install these signs as folks go to renew...
Correct.
...their current lease.
Yes.
And then after that, it's just stickers?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all the questions I have today. Thanks. Next item.
Item number 33, ordinance to approve a three-year agreement with two one-year options between the city and Wage Works, Inc., to provide flexible benefit plan administrative services.
Public hearing on number 33 is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing's closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items number 34 and 35 shall be held on the second reading on the supplement. Item number 37, resolution that ordinance number 39926 authorizing a vote to be taken on the issuance of general obligation bonds not to exceed $50 million for the crossroads infrastructure redevelopment, being hereby is rescinded.
Public hearing on number 37 is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing, opponents?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Stephen Schutz. I reside at 6604 Pratt Street. I'm here to urge all of you to ignore the mayor's request to take away the public vote on this crossroads deal. Doesn't seem right to a lot of people I talked to on the street. The working people and the citizens of Omaha paying for public enterprise, they should have a voice. I think they shouldn't take away the public voice on this kind of stuff. People should have a voice where their money is concerned. It's up to the mayor and city council to educate the people so rational, intelligent decisions can be made. This is the transparency we hear so much about. I would like to urge you guys to do the right thing. You seem to be intelligent individuals. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents today?
Sean Cunningham, 604, South 22nd Street. As best as I can understand this, this is about rescinding a decision you guys made a couple of weeks ago to put the bond issue with crossroads up to a public vote. Now, my concerns with this are, as I've said many times when I've come down here, there is a problem with spending public money for private expenditures, especially commercial ventures. And a bond is actually taking on more debt. So, that is something that the public has a right to decide on, whether we should go into debt for a commercial developer to make money through their business. Now, I was reading in the paper earlier, it's not just the $50 million bond, it's $165 million total that the developer is requesting. So, even if the bond doesn't go through a public vote and you guys still choose to pass it, you're still indebted us, $165 million through tax increment financing and an additional occupational tax, which seems kind of weird to me with the Republican mayor not wanting to have new taxes. But my main thing with this is you guys have the obligation to listen to your constituents, not the mayor on this. She doesn't vote for you, the people in your districts do. A lot of people are not happy with the idea of continuing to spend public money for private ventures. Yes, we all want the city to look nice. Yes, we want to have new things, but we have to reprioritize where a lot of this money is spent and especially when it is concerning a commercial, private venture. So, I'm here today to urge you guys to do the right thing, put this up to a public vote and let people decide how their money is spent. It could easily be swept away, done away with by the council or putting it all to the county commissioners, but again, I'm urging you to do the right thing, let this go to a public vote, and if not, we'll still have to fight it within the funds come in. I don't think it's right that we prioritize this type of spending when we're in a budget crunch for a commercial venture. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents here today? See none, public hearings closed. Ms. Milton?
Well, first, I want to, I want to thank both of you for coming down and it's Sean, is that right?
DeSean.
DeSean? DeSean, I just want to let you know that I think at this point you were, you were just discussing, that you didn't really approve of, of the bonds and public spending. I just wanted to clarify something for you, that by taking this off, we can't pass it. In order to pass a bond, it has to go to a vote of the people. And so, I just wanted to let you know that this isn't, we're not going to appropriate $50 million in taxpayer expense for it.
Okay, and that's what I was kind of curious about. Like I said, as best as I understood, this was a vote to rescind your guys' February decision. And like I said, even if it doesn't come up to a bond issue in the future, there still will be public money put to this. So, that's just kind of what I wanted to speak to today.
And, and what I'd like to do is if I could call Ms. Cassie Segren down, she might be able to shed a little light on this for you as well.
Cassie Segren, Mayor's Office.
And Cassie, when I initially had a meeting right before our vote with Councilman Festerman, Festerson, President Festerson, and also Rod Yates, you were present at that meeting and I, I recall you saying that you were supportive but with reservation. And one of the things we discussed is that there was going to be an economic impact study being done and we would have that study, I believe I was told, mid-March. And we haven't yet got that study. So, could you explain a little bit as to, as to why we're being so cautious now?
Yeah. Yes, I was in that same meeting. You had asked that question, I expressed that. As part of a due diligence process, when you do any sort of major development such as the crossroads area, part of that is an economic and fiscal impact analysis as well as a market feasibility study, a parking study, a traffic study. We see those most commonly almost on every single project that we have going on in town that bring that large mixed-use presence there. We did not actually get the market feasibility and impact analysis studies started until late January. late January. When we briefed the council on this, that was known. It was, I believe, passed in December approving the contract to get started, but based on their availability and timing and the scope of their contract, that's when they were able to get started. It was their hope to have something to us by, you know, mid-March, so that way we would have enough time as if this were, had to have passed, and it since did pass, that there was education as to what it would bring in, what new incremental sales tax it would create, if it could be supported and sustained. They have been working diligently. It's a big process. They have not, they haven't received that information or compiled it completely yet. We have not yet received all of it. We've had some initial feedback. They were actually in town last week completing their study. They were in Tuesday through Friday, actually, working with the development team. They met with several different city departments, they met with myself, and working through those numbers. So we don't have that back, and I think, in my opinion, by rescinding this and not having it on a ballot, and not having the potential of taxpayer debt, if that were to be the case, if it were to show that we couldn't support this, this would be the right decision to do.
And one of the reasons we would want to rescind this at this point is because we don't have that tool, that economic study, which is what the voters in Omaha, I think, should require before they can make an intelligent decision on whether or not to vote for this or not. So at this point, not only the council doesn't have the information, but we don't have that information to share with our constituents to help them make a reasonable, intelligent decision on whether to vote for this or not. Does that sum it up?
Yeah, that would be correct. You know, I think it really puts the voters in a tough spot to be able to vote on something that they don't know about, or they're not educated on. And so the more information we can provide them, the more education we can provide them, the better off, you know, I think we would all be.
Now, one of the things that led me to vote the way I did the last time was because you did confirm that even if this bond issue was passed, the mayor still did not have to necessarily issue the bonds if she evaluated the study and it came back. So we were, I think, and I don't want to speak for the rest of council, but I think we were fairly confident that, or we had confidence in the mayor and mayor's office that the bonds would not be issued. But at this point, it's just not fair to the voters to put it on the ballot without giving them the information.
I would agree with that statement.
Is there any, and I didn't ask, is there anything else that you wanted to share that you had thoughts on this about?
The only thing I would add is that, you know, I think we do need more information. I think we need to make sure everything's vetted. That's the reason why we do these studies, that's the reason why we invest in them and make sure that we are making a sound decision. And sometimes, taking a step back is okay to look at things.
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to take a little bit of time here because I think there have been a number of things that have been said, quite frankly, and there are a number of stories that are out there. And I think we need to place some context on this, and hopefully some clarity, and not, hopefully I won't muddy the waters anymore, but I think there needs to be a little bit of clarity here. First of all, to begin with, there was a recognition on the part of all of us here in city government that the Crossroads, something needed to happen at Crossroads. And how we would go about it, there were a number of, there were a number of discussions had about how we would move this forward. There were several discussions that you and I both had with the mayor on occasion, and on a number of occasions, we had a chance to talk about this, because we recognized that Crossroads, something had to happen with Crossroads. Let me start by saying that all of these decisions that were made and the subsequent, and when we decided that this was going to be, we were going to put this on the agenda, this was a collective decision by everyone involved. This was a collective decision. There was no time that I'm aware of that the city council had any preconceived notions of passing anything at this point. When we started this process, there were a number of questions that the city council had, there were a number of questions that personally I had, there were a number of questions that the mayor had. And as we moved through the process, we agreed collectively, after hearing a number of different presentations, and also getting an assurance from one of the developers that if we passed this bond issue and the revenues didn't come in as were anticipated, that there would be $4 million set aside annually to make sure that the taxpayer wasn't burdened. This was a, this was an issue with many of us on this council, it was an issue with the mayor, quite frankly. And after we got that assurance, we proceeded collectively to move forward with this project. We knew that there were some other concerns out there, we wanted to hear what the public had to say. We wanted to get some feedback from, you know, many of our partners, from the chamber and other places. But we moved forward collectively to make, try and make something happen, and at no time was the council, was there a consensus on this council to move ahead until all the questions were answered. Once we recognized that there were other problems or other questions and concerns about this project, we collectively decided to place this on the agenda to rescind what we had done in February. When you're doing a project this size, we have, there are a number of moving parts that we have to try and address and deal with. In this particular instance, we collectively, the mayor and council, we collectively decided that it would be best if we took this, if we took this, put this on the agenda, to rescind putting this on the ballot. And so that's kind of where we are today, but all of these were collective, collective decisions that were made. And again, hopefully, we recognize that something needs to occur at Crossroads. It would be detrimental to the city, in my judgment, that if we don't address it in some sort of way and be as flexible as we can, I don't necessarily agree that the city shouldn't be involved, because this is an investment, and what we would be doing if we were successful to get a return on our investment. But again, I want to stress, all of these things were done, and all of the, all of the discussions, as we moved forward, when we placed it on the, on the agenda, now we have this on the agenda, all of these were done in a collective fashion. And I just want to set the record straight in terms of that, so that it's clear, you know, we moved together, there was no, there was no consensus prior to, and what we have today is, when we're doing a project like this, if something happens that makes us feel that we need to step back, we ought to have the ability to change our minds and not have finger pointing and all sorts of other things going on. The fact of the matter is, is that we're being cautious, all of us are being cautious with taxpayer dollars. That needs to be recognized, and it needs to be recognized that we move forward collectively in this effort. And we will continue to do so, and we'll continue to look for opportunities to develop Crossroads. I don't know that this, this issue is dead, I don't know that developers, that the developers are done with this. I think we're looking for creative, other ways to get Crossroads done. But the fact of the matter is, is that we need to continue to move forward, and we ought to have the right to change our minds without there being finger pointing or people saying certain things that may or may not be true, quite frankly. And those are just my comments, Mr. President, and I wanted to, hopefully, in some way, clear up some misconceptions that were out there, and hopefully we can continue to move forward in a positive way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a little bit segue off of what Councilman Gray just said. You know, I think there are four kinds of councils. One council is a perfect council, in which they never make a mistake, and I don't know whether they exist, perhaps when the earth, the moon, and the planets are all in line, maybe you can get one of those councils every now and then, but perhaps they do exist. Then there are bad councils, and they're the ones that don't get things right at all, and they kind of stumble over one another. And then there are good councils that don't bend when an occasion, occasional mistake happens. And I was part of a council that made a decision that we should have bent, and we should have rescinded, and we didn't, and as a result, we got into some hot water. So I can understand good councils that need to stop and take a pause, and then they don't, and then everybody suffers. And then the fourth kind of council is a good council that understands how to utilize, and how to utilize a pause button, and how to reevaluate. I think that's what this council is talking, is about, and I think that's what Councilman Gray was trying to say. So the need for finger pointing isn't there, and I thought everybody involved did their best job at the time, but new information comes along, and new information makes you have to take a look at it a second way. I do want the public to know that the investment community did approach me, and they're wondering about issues of fairness, and so that's part of what's out there, too. We have to make sure that the deal we cut here is similar or equivalent to other deals that we would normally cut. So we want to make sure that the development community, that we don't cause a ripple within that community, so that we're consistent. Just in summary, I like to say that I, too, am not pointing fingers. I think both the third and the second floor work together well. I think Cassie does an exceptional job, and I look forward to vetting the issue further and to making sure that our math is solid math, so that if and when we do put it on the ballot, that the constituents, the constituency citizens know exactly what they're voting for and that there's no confusion, as what my colleague to my left was saying. So other than that, I think it's the right move. I don't think it's a sign of fighting, and I don't think it's a sign of incompetence. I think it's a sign of competence and ability to step back and say, we need to do a little bit more vetting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jerome.
There's been so much talk about basketball here today in tournaments. I feel like as a council, there's, it's near the end of the game, and we're just calling a timeout here to get, to slow the game down. Yeah, I don't point fingers, I don't know that I would do anything but echo the sentiments of what have been said already, but I think that there is this question now that has arisen, in part by the questions we heard today from the two members of the public who came down to speak, and by some who have already begun to ask me, well, where do we go from here? What happens next? Does the economic impacts analysis get completed? What other discussions will happen? Or will the Crossroads continue to, you know, deteriorate without anything done? So if Cassie could come up and just answer a few questions, I think it's just mostly to address, where do we go from here? Because by taking this off, by rescinding that resolution to place that on the ballot, just so the members of the public here know, there will be no public $50 million bond issue, and there could not be as structured, because the law prohibits that, right?
Cassie Segren, Mayor's Office. Yes, if the council would vote to rescind the $50 million bond issue that it had previously approved to be put on the ballot in May, there would be no $50 million bond issue on the May ballot. In terms of going from here, it's my opinion that there's a lot of different directions this could go. A key component of that is not only taking the market and fiscal impact analysis and the market feasibility, but combining that with a parking study and a traffic study, and really looking at it from, you know, that 30,000-foot view to see if there are things that make sense. Is this the right decision? What sort of revenues can we expect based on the model for this project to produce? So going forward from here, there's been a lot of different discussion. One of those would be, you know, to continue to work with the developer and the capacity and the scope that they would like to see this project, to try to figure out a way if it does completely 100% vet out that that is the amount of the improvements, or that's the size and scope and whatnot. You know, unfortunately, I stand here today without a lot of that information, because it's still in process. And that's part of doing, and part of why we do those studies, is to gather that information. The other part of it could be, as we look forward, you know, we make comparables as we have with other projects, you know, there's been other major redevelopments in town, Midtown Crossing, Exarban Village, that have had various unique public components to them. So looking at some of those structures to see what it is we can do. Part of it is making sure that if this council would approve, you know, a tax increment financing package for this project, that that is used in the best and possible use. So there's a lot of different things at this point in time, you know, the developer knows that the city is still committed to working with them on this project, they're still committed to doing a project at this site. You know, one of the largest things I heard, especially over the last probably two weeks, was a misconception that the city owned the site, which isn't the case. You know, we don't own that property, it's privately held property, the developer actually owns the parcel that is the Crossroads Mall. So how, you know, how do we work through some of that stuff? At the end of the day, you know, it's my opinion, I think we'll see something happen there. It's just a matter of what it actually looks like, feels like, shapes like, smells like, that's yet to be determined.
Is it fair to say that the financing options, to the extent that it involves the public sector, would most likely resort to more conventional financing means?
In my opinion, I think it could. You know, I think it would be typical of what we've seen in other projects.
This was a public financing tool authorized by the legislature to create, basically, an economic redevelopment area, which would allow for the use of these bonds, that would then be paid back by this additional, I called it like an occupational tax, on purchases in that district. It was, I think, described as unique, whereas what I just heard you talking about in the what's next phase, were more traditional things like tax increment financing and those sorts of, let's call it, economic redevelopment menu or tools that are available.
Correct.
But the size, the scope, the dimensions, and those packages are all to be determined, as well as any agreements that would be necessary to approve those would have to, again, come back here.
That would be correct.
And if they're TIF-related, there's a couple stops along the way in Planning Board, Planning Department.
Yeah, if they're TIF-related, you know, they would submit an application, it goes to TIF Committee, from TIF Committee, it would go to Planning Board, and then on to City Council. So you definitely have other opportunities for public input, public engagement, more vetting of that process. You know, it's one of those things that you have to look, and I don't think I've ever been a project this size or scope, that there hasn't been a, okay, let's make sure, let's make sure we're on the right path.
Now, in terms of the economic impact study that was approved by the council, it came to us, we approved it, the expenditure, but that, I guess, was to be, or is to be reimbursed by the developers.
That's correct.
So that'll still get paid by the developers?
They'll reimburse the city for that, for that study.
And then in terms of the parking studies, the traffic studies, the other studies that are traditionally done by other redevelopments, that you come in on a weekly basis to planning, the developers typically pay for those as well, correct?
That would be correct.
And that would be no different here?
Correct.
So in this period of time, where I would describe as a regrouping, it's just pulling back the reins, slowing it down, taking a more comprehensive look at this to not only address the concerns that have been arisen, whether it be by the development community or by other stakeholders and interested people in Omaha, it also allows us a greater perspective on other impacts to the city, and that'll be accomplished by taking this off.
I would agree 100% with that. In looking at that and how this moves forward, as Councilman Gray said, you know, we're all in this together, you know, the city, the developer, and so we need to make sure that we are doing what's best for the city, and we are getting the best potential development at that parcel. So doing all of that, like I said, the studies aren't out of the norm, they're something that are required. The larger scale mixed-use project that you have like this, that's when you really start getting into the market feasibility and economic and fiscal impact analysis component of this, and it's just the matter of where we're at, and we need to make sure that this is a step in the right direction.
And as a collateral benefit to this, it may also allow the dust to settle on other, another major proposal for the Crossroads area, just to the east of that, that's in the pipeline, and will be coming to Planning Board in April, I believe, correct?
I believe that's correct, and you know, I would say that that, you know, could be a potential spin-off effect. You know, at the end of the day, we're listening, and that's as being a part of government and working through and working for the constituents and the taxpayers, I think that that's part of our responsibility and our job, is to listen to what they have to say and really work through that.
Well, I want to thank you for answering those questions, and I think as we can see that what's next is a time to pull back, reassess, probably retool in a more conventional development package to be determined.
Correct.
And this time will allow that to happen. It's no less of a priority, and there may be some other stuff that's coming to the east of there that shouldn't be confused with this one, in the interim.
I would agree with that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Grenant.
Thank you, Mr. President. With all that's been said here today, I think we have reached a crossroads. We need to, a timeout, and step back and say, all right, not pointing any fingers, you know, there's been some talk about maybe some math that's just not going to work, some concerns about that financial portion of this triangle, of this, of this development. Take a look at it, and as Councilman Jerome has said, to regroup, there's nothing stopping it from coming back to us. If we rescind this, we can go through that process again. I guess what just bothers me, and I don't want to be the one, or Grenant's the only one that's pointing fingers this afternoon, I don't want, I don't want to do that, but sometimes when you get into the media and something is said, and it, it's just not factual, it's not the truth. There's no way that another councilman came into my office, or to my home, or in the parking garage, and twisted my arm to go in the direction of supporting the Crossroads. It never happened. This was thought out, talked out, processed out, and it came to a consensus, there was a collective movement, and it got here, it was voted on. Now, I know for a fact, over the 12 years that I've been here, there are times that we have stepped back to take a look at another project, and put the brakes on it, and took a look at it, maybe through another set of fresh eyes. I don't think this project is any different. Granted, it's a big one, but just want the general public to understand that this is not something that was muscled through the system. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Now for the lights.
A second.
Motion, a second. Roll call. Grenant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. Resolution is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 38, resolution that's, appointment of Leonard Romano to serve as the Commissioner of the Omaha Housing Authority is hereby confirmed. Public hearing on number 38 is today. Are there any proponents? CNN, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
No.
Roll call. Grenant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. adopted, seven to zero.
Motion, Jerome.
Roll call. Grenant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President? Two forty-eight. Our clock is gone.[1786.45]